Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberity, and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is a motion to open a public hearing.
The A and R.
This one's an A and R. First thing on the agenda is an A and R at 19 Lancaster Street in Auburn.
Is anyone here for this one? Chairman, I'll pull it up on the board. Well, I won't pull up the plan because it was changed minor, but you've got these in your packets. And what this is, about a little less than a year ago, there was step one of this process was when the owner of 39 Sher Street purchased some land from the Auburn Water District. And the intent of that, at that time, was to create a second lot down the road. And today is that down the road. So they used the land that they bought from the Auburn Water District to create a buildable lot, which will be now known as 19 Lancaster Street. Sign fits the minimum criteria for parcels in the residential zoning district over 10,000 square feet. Needs to set back requirements and furnish requirements. As far as I can tell, the A and R is submitted according to our regulations.
Did everyone get their packet today?
Through the chair?
I did.
So it says that this lies within the zone to reach our area of, uh, preferred, so that would come up should someone come to propose to build on it?
If they were to build anything other than a residence or render the lot more impervious than the next, it could require an act of preparedness.
Okay.
What does this say, "Super Water"?
Yes.
Because it has the, uh, what's the one I'm seeing?
2078.
Yep. 1978, just pulled it right up. Which one is it up there?
This would be the wooded area behind.
Oh, okay.
It's almost. Geez, now, man, you could be almost there.
Nick, any questions?
No.
Scott?
No questions.
John? Wendy? There's a motion to endorse the A and R.
Make a motion to endorse the A and R, please?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
He's gonna hear it.
He does?
I do.
Yes.
Yes. Send it right here. Thank you.
Okay, we have a 7:00 public hearing. The applicant is first, wished the Pentecostal church, request for site plan approval to operate a church within an existing church facility under section 3.2.3.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 188 Oxford Street North. This has been continued from September 25th, 2018 hearing. Ms. Chairman? Is the applicant?
I don't expect the applicant to be here. At our previous meeting, they had requested to continue to the 30th. We were waiting to see if trick-or-treating would take place on Halloween or the night prior, but the selectmen are over there now deciding on it's going to be Wednesday on Halloween. So if the board wants to hold its second meeting of October on October 30th, it is available. And if that's the case...
Last Tuesday in October.
Yes, and if that's the case, we could continue this one until that date.
I make a motion to continue the meeting to October 30th, Tuesday, October 30th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next public hearing. The applicant is Masad Family LLC, a request for site plan approval under section 6.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the expansion of a dealership parking lot and vehicle storage on property located at 24 to 28 to 30 Faith Ave. This has been continued from our September 25th, 2018 hearing. Ms. Chairman? Is the applicant?
I don't expect the applicant to be here. At our previous meeting, they had requested to continue to the 30th. We were waiting to see if trick-or-treating would take place on Halloween or the night prior, but the selectmen are over there now deciding on it's going to be Wednesday on Halloween. So if the board wants to hold its second meeting of October on October 30th, it is available. And if that's the case...
Last Tuesday in October.
Yes, and if that's the case, we could continue this one until that date.
I make a motion to continue the meeting to October 30th, Tuesday, October 30th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The applicant is Masad Family LLC, a request for site plan approval under section 6.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the expansion of a dealership parking lot and vehicle storage on property located at 24 to 28 to 30 Faith Ave. This has been continued from our September 25th meeting. The applicant? You state your name and...
My name is Zachary Wuss. I'm from Existing Grade Incorporated. I'm one of the engineers working on the site. And so from the last time we were here, we made a few changes to the plan based upon the recommendation of the board. Um, I believe, Matt, you have all the most recent plans. I did just, before we come over here, I resubmitted a plan based upon, uh...
I got these out of everybody.
Okay, perfect. And then, um, the plan revision based upon the fire chief's comment.
Okay.
Um, I do have that revised plan sheet.
Okay.
Seems kind of important one, proposed site. We're all unfamiliar with the existing site conditions.
This is one more driveway here. If you want a pedestrian, I'd go.
I feel like I can give a quick summary of the changes that we've made from the last time we were here.
Yes, go ahead.
So what we did was we removed the second driveway that came along to the curve of the realigned Faith Avenue, and we created one driveway entrance that was 36 feet wide. And I ran that by Mr. Coyle as well as, um, the, um, the fire chief, and everybody was acceptable with having one driveway entrance that was wide enough. Um, one of the changes that I had to make that just came in last minute from Captain Moran was to this one driveway aisle coming in. We widened that to 33 feet wide. Um, again, that was at his request, so that he could have better access into the site. Um, so we did lose five parking spaces by doing that, just by shifting those islands over one, one set of storage spaces. So that was the, the driveway. Um, we, we've added perimeter landscaping, and I've kept everything out of 25-foot no-to-sturb zone, and then the, um, the proposed plantings are not going to hinder site distance. I've added a pedestrian walkway from the existing dealership across Faith Avenue into this site. Um, and we've put some low-level landscaping alongside of it to kind of make it look, look a little nicer than just a...
You have the landscaping on the interior side of the parking lot?
Correct. I have, I have, um...
There's nothing on it.
Arborby's along the side, um, the east side and as well as the west side up against the church's property line.
Yep. So those two concrete, through the chairs, the two concrete were moved so that one whole aisle of parking spaces disappeared?
That's correct. I had another set of five kind of pushing out to the west, but we pulled that in once. So that was a 33, 33-foot wide drive, so we were trying to match the entrance width coming in. And one of the other revisions that we made was we added a fence around the top of the pond. Um, I know last time we ever talked about a chain link fence, but when I was speaking with Mr. Coyle and the client, um, what we proposed to do is do a, um, a wooden post and beam fence with, um, thorny rosebush underneath it to kind of try and make it look nice and also prevent animals from coming underneath the fence with the thorns to stay out of it instead of doing the four-foot chain link fence.
Well, one of the reasons for the chain link is to protect from children getting into the pond.
Yeah, we'll have a three-foot wooden post, um, fence going around it, and then put the thorny rosebush to...
Yeah, but someone could get under those rails.
I guess there is the potential for that. I mean, we can absolutely change that real quick.
Some kind of, you know, like fence that's not something thin, like, I don't, I don't know what you might use, but I would want, the reason, one of the main reasons is the protection of the, any children or anybody that could get into it. I mean, post and rail will look nice. It'll look a lot nicer, but we need something, with something inside of it or within it to contain. That's the main reason, and I'm, I wouldn't be happy without that.
Okay, I can make that decision.
Nick, how do you feel?
I tend to agree.
Scott? John?
Yeah, use the one by two mesh. You put that on the inside, the thorny rosebush is on the outside.
And that's strong enough, nobody's going to bend that.
Okay, I can definitely do that in quick revision.
And black, too.
Through the chair, was the drainage for the highway, was that addressed with the state?
I'm in, I'm in the process right now with the review. Chris Chambers, he's the District 3 permit engineer, he's reviewing it, but he, he doesn't see any concerns with what we're doing over here. Um, I provided him with the drainage calculations, and when I ran the numbers, we're reducing the peak rate of runoff as well as the volume for each storm event that we've designed again, so it's actually, and, and, you know, we're pushing clean water over there now, so it's kind of making each, each situation a little better, but there, he, he doesn't seem, see any concerns with it.
Is this the drain that's going to be opposite about the middle of the parking lot, looking towards the turnpike ramp?
The one that's in the middle of the parking lot, that's the existing one.
But you're going to have a...
And then we have a new pipe at our pond. I have an outlet control structure, and there's going to be a pipe that we're going to trench underneath Faith Avenue in daylight into the slope.
Opposite, which would be, it's, it's the northern slope...
Correct.
...of the area, but if you're on the turn, it's the right-hand wall of the turnpike ramp.
That's correct, if you're, if you're on the ramp.
Getting onto 290, and as I go by it several times since, it's, it's like a bog now.
Yes.
So I'm going to need some assurance from our own graves or somebody, whoever's with heaven for the site review, to assure me, other than the state also, that this isn't going to be any kind of a dangerous thing for the, that we are allowing water to be directed, because you could have substantial amount of water to go out there into that ramp, which is already heavy with water, and it's...
Sure.
It's got a little bit of a swell in it, but not, not much. It's like a, it's like a wetlands area almost all the time.
And, and again, what we're doing is that we're taking that, I'm sure you're aware, the pre-existing flow off-site, and we're reducing it through the underground infiltration also with the storage of the ponds. We're actually pushing less water over there than is currently being directed over there after we're done with our construction. So again, it's, it's the peak rate and the volume that we've decreased on all those storm events was actually, it's, it's a better situation now than it currently is once we've constructed this.
I'm still going to want something from our review people. Nick?
I think that's fair.
Scott? John?
That's fair.
Me?
Yep.
Okay, you can go on if you've got anything else. Do you?
And the only other item is, well, there's two more. One is that we put an emergency outlet on the pond that wasn't there before, and what we've done is we're going to grade a little swell into the shoulder to direct it towards the catch basin, and, um, that, the intent is that will never be used, but at least it's there as a failsafe so that we don't push any water out into the road. Um, again, Mr. Coyle has reviewed that, and he's in agreement that that is a, um, you know, a good solution to it.
Lighting for the crosswalk that's going to cross Faith Ave, the five foot, to bring you from the existing site to this new parking lot.
Um, yeah, lighting plan submitted. I'm not changing any of the lights over there from when we additionally proposed it, and it, it is lighting up that, that crosswalk area.
That's what I mean, I want, we would like to have something that's well, a well-lit, cars can, will be coming down there. It'll be kind of like a racetrack, especially when it's all brand-new. It'll be right, just about where the curb is, and...
Well, at that point, that's going to be private road, isn't it?
No, that's still going to be town road.
That'll be the new road.
That'll be the new road.
And then we are going through the zoning department for our special permit.
Okay, great. Do you have a lot lighting plan?
Yeah, it's, yeah, the third, the third sheet has the, um, it might be kind of tough to read them on the, uh, on the 11-by-17s.
This is the lot line, property line, this exists. This one here. This, this line, yeah, right now. Requirement is zero at the lot line, right? Yes. Requirement is zero, candle, uh, put candles at the property line. It's...
Through the chair in this case, I don't...
Because it's down in the hollow, and there's no, uh...
Residences?
There's no residences there anymore.
With the crosswalk where it is, I think more lighting, the better.
Yep. You all right with that, Nick?
Yeah.
Scott? Wendy?
Yep.
Those are about the, the main changes from the, the last time that we were here.
Is that... Nick, do you have anything else that you remember or...
No, I don't.
...to talk about?
No.
Scott?
Uh, no, I mean, I like that we get rid of this, this entrance over here.
Hmm.
I fully understand the 10-foot wall and why it's raised, but that's, unfortunately, I didn't really, uh, wasn't part of that one.
That is the question, though, why is we putting a 10-foot wall on the road grade 628 and a lot grade 630?
It's part of the subdivision of the road.
I don't understand the purpose. The other question I have, but you all don't see it.
Yeah.
The other question I have, see, now as we're removing the driveway from up here, do we still need to take down that oak tree? Or is it already gone?
Probably should take it down.
Why?
Car dealerships and acorns are not friends.
Don't pull your car out there.
That's an option.
Which, um, which? The, uh, the 24?
Yeah, 24-inch oak tree.
Um, the only thing with that is that I have to do grading in that area for my pond. I don't want to grade around a tree and have tree roots in that area.
Well, what's existing grade compared to the proposed grade?
Well, right in that area, I got, that, that's almost right where the top of my pond is, at 627.5.
Yeah.
And...
I don't have a plan with existing grade.
I guess 628, 626. I mean, I think that area is right in there, right around 624 or so, 625.
Yep.
Yeah, I got a 626 here, a 628, so it is sloping down, but I mean, to try and shape a pond around that tree and...
Well, just that we're taking out one, two, three, four, five, probably six more at the pond. See if we have to cut down the trees.
Anything else?
Uh, one more question. On a typical riprap slope, is that inside the pond?
No, that is, I have at the corners, at the southwest corner of the proposed parking lot, I had to go a little tighter on the grading to stay out of the 25-foot no-to-sturb, so I just have a couple areas of that rap slope.
Hey, that's a really steep slope, one-to-one. Just for lamest purposes, do you have any idea how big a 200-pound riprap stone is? I have no idea. Cause the four gradations there, 25, 50, 100, 200. I don't know what side you plan on using to hold that slope. I get it better.
Of course, I don't have that information off, off my head.
And you're way below that great manhole. Does that say LeBaron with a frame cover? I think it does. Might show better on the big pond. I would shoot before, I thought.
Yeah, LeBaron, approved equal.
You tell me where you're going to buy that? They don't exist.
Or they approved equal, I mean, it's, it's...
I just wish we'd all stop calling LeBaron boundaries.
Yeah, I guess you found that one before.
Yeah. When Jay took them over, and they broke all the molds.
So just what was, and talked about already, update on the fence spec, just basically.
Yeah, obviously, the, the one by two mesh.
Waiting, and I mentioned the state seems to be okay with it, but the board would be remiss to permit something without their written consent.
Sure.
So we need their, their feedback in writing, especially...
Can you still have peer review, someone review it, too?
Correct, and then be a grace to do a cursory follow-up review. There's still wanting an account that was supported, based on what's been built already, so that is, that is also possible. And you can even have them just do all, all the changes on the letter and just comment on those, as well as the driveway and the, uh, right, yeah, rest. The other thing is the, um, special permit from the ZVA. So typically, the board doesn't render its approvals prior to special permits. I believe there's going to be a, a different date of this application. I don't know if you guys spoke of that or not, but the next ZVA meeting, I think, is 10th or 17th, it's one of those days. I just speak with the, speak with Caleb, and get that application as soon as you can, because our next meeting is the 30th. I have a feeling it wouldn't be in front of the ZVA before that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I'll, I'll talk with Caleb tomorrow and get all that straightened out.
The board does have the option for conditional approval for special permit. I, I don't recommend it.
Let's get the, we'll get, we'll get the zoning boys.
And then regarding the 24-inch tree, that's the last comment I have.
Can you work to see if there might be something you can do?
Sure.
We'd really like to see that one at least.
Okay, I'll definitely look at it and see if there's some way we can just kind of try and keep that.
Through the chair, that, are we talking about a sightline issue right along the tree? No.
It's enormous.
This is a big old oak tree.
If you cover down the corner, you're going to see behind, and you cover around the corner, you're going to see it from. It's right out of the floor. It's noise.
Captain Moran mentioned this to me prior to your conversation with him, Zach, and said, see the two traffic islands on the west end of the lot line up with the width of the entrance?
And then that's when I pulled them over, one set, to get them to line up the best that I could without doing a total reconfiguration in there.
Okay. It worked. And then, town engineer's office received the plans this morning also. And they also recommended the same thing, Graves, do a, their cursory review of the changes, and then give them sufficient time to provide any comments that they have also. Um, regarding the special permit from zoning officer confirms the need for a special permit for the act for. And, and these are from Zach, just saying that he spoke to the gentleman from Mastod, and that he spoke to the fire department chief also, uh, captain also. So those are the remaining items that we've been over. I think if these are addressed in advance for our next meeting, we should be in good shape.
The other thing I spoke of it, but the lighting for the crosswalk from one side to the exit, I know you've got sight lighting there, but I want you to look at it to see if there's some kind of lighting you can clearly light that crosswalk. Something special.
Like crosswalk, is like street lighting for the crosswalk or street lighting for the pedestrian walkway?
That's where you're crossing.
If I just pull, I want to pull up, it'll really beam onto that.
In the process of crossing, we already have one death in town at a lot, and we don't want to have one.
Don't eat that on anybody's shoulders. Don't leave that on anybody's shoulders. Okay.
You said the next ZVA is? Seven for the town?
I can still put this on for the 30th to get the rest of the items.
Make a motion to continue the hearing until October 30th?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want me to leave this one with you?
I'm gonna re, make a motion that we reopen for public comment.
You have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this? There being none, you can...
Make a motion to close the hearing. And continue the hearing to October 30th.
Second, John?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a 710 applicant. It is Mossad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the urban zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. I believe there's a request for continuance till October 30th.
Make a motion to continue till October 30th?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. We have a 715 PM new applicant. The applicant is FW Web Company. A request for site plan approval under section 3.2.7.1 of the urban zoning bylaws for the use of a distribution and sale of wholesale retail facility located at 33 Sword Street, Auburn Hills. We have a motion to open the public hearing. So you have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the hearing is open. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you please state your names for the...
For the recommendation, it was Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering. With me is Andy Macbeth from Greenleaf Construction, as well as project manager Jamie Anderson, also in Greenleaf. The project is a 33 Sword Street. It is the former Imperial School Distribution Company. If you can bring up the existing conditions now.
No, that's Building Systems.
Building Systems.
Atlas.
Just invisible. So this was Imperial Distribution?
Imperial. Imperial.
Yeah. For the aerial. You can see here where...
You can see Webb is right here. The slice buildings. So they're moving to the 33 Sword Street location as well. So, if we can go to existing conditions, I'd like to just kind of take a look at the site. It says here right now, the building is not going to be changed in footprint. There are going to be changes to the exterior relative to door openings, overhead doors, access locations. Currently, there are 12 loading docks on the westerly side of the property, along with some variations of parking along the westerly side, parking in the back, parking on the east side as well. There is some parking in the front, which is very limited in size and scale. That right now is the handicap parking, and there's another handicap parking space over here. So if you drive around the site, you can see there's essentially quite a bit of parking that exists on the property. The main part of the building in the front was the office area. In the main building in the rear is all the warehouse area, which Imperial used for their distribution facilities. Under proposed conditions, what we're looking at doing is a lot of interior changes to the building. The office area, which was essentially the whole front area, would be slid down and expanded into the back. So there would be a section of the existing warehouse that would be added back to the office, which would be all reconstructed office area. The area to the, to the left, as you face from the front, would be a proposed showroom that would become the F, the Webb Home, Frank Webb Home facility. So there would be FW Webb would have their main entrance here, and Frank Webb Home would have their main entrance in this location here. We've reconfigured the parking in the front to basically conform with the urban zoning with respect to size, maneuvering aisles, and parking requirements. We, we have selected a location, this area here, for a handicap spot, one of them. That will allow access to either the FW Web, the FW Web office, or the Frank Webb Home site. There's also another handicap spot in this location here, which would be allowed to be utilized for office personnel to have direct access into the building without going through the main front part of the office. There would also be another handicap accessible spot located in this area here to provide, if someone drives by and turns in, they will at least have a spot to go here. So we have, we have a need of a total of, I believe it's four, it might be down to three. But I think we have... I think we're showing three right now. So I have to take a look at the numbers, but I believe, I believe the number that we need is four on the plan. But we have several spots and locations around the site that we can do. Provide handicap accessibility. So if we go back to the front, I'm sorry. Want proposed? So, like I said, we have one handicap spot here, we could add one here. I believe, I believe the number that we use four, basically on the number of spaces that we're actually providing on the property. So the intention is to break up the parking mainly for the office personnel to be utilized in this location. For showroom personnel and showroom clients to come into this location here. There's also a third area within the building, which is the contractor pickup area. That's where if a contractor orders a park or has to come in for some supplies, they're able to drive up into another separate area here and have their needs met directly from the warehouse. They can call ahead, Andy can get into a little bit more of the operational end of things. But essentially, so this parking area will be utilized more for that use than, than the office and/or the showroom area. And then we have employee parking that would be towards the back of the site on both sides of the building. Some additional parking within the, the, the open storage area. We've highlighted the open storage area, basically surrounding it with fences on either end. There'd be a 24-foot gate for entry and exit, some supplies coming in. On, on larger trucks would be utilized potentially that side or this side, depending upon what, what we're on the, on the site. That, those elements or those products would be stored on the outside. And once again, Andy can get into the X, what those are relative to need. The other thing that we've done is we've taken a look at some of the improvements that needed to be made onto the site. Specifically on the eastern side of the site, the existing drainage facility is basically catch basin to catch basin to catch basin to discharge, which also ties in a roof drain here and there somewhere along the way. Most of these catch basins are filled up with either pavement or silt or just stones, just unmaintained for a long time. So our proposal basically is to rebuild the drainage system by adding a new catch basin, basically adjacent to the existing catch basin. Bring it down to a manhole, going with a catch basin manhole configuration, more conventional. We'll be tying in the rear roof drain system in this location here. The front roof drain system actually already goes out at this area here and heads back down into an existing drainage system, which is off of our property. This then would head towards a settling area in the back. Pitch the grade back in this area here and create a catch basin in this location, this area. So we're basically be able to take all the flow on this side of the building that currently in reality, more or less goes overland and picks up whatever silt and sediment that it can grab, it dumps it to the left behind us. And it probably, before we even clean out those basins, it wouldn't meet any of the stormwater management criteria that we'd be dealing with right now with both DEP and the, and the tunnel. So, these improvements, where it is redevelopment, would bring us back into that criteria. We would actually meet those requirements under, under the stormwater management criteria under DEP's regulations. So those are the drainage improvements that we're proposing. Internal roof drains, as I stated, they would just pick up what they're picking up now and do the same discharge. There's no increase in, in building footprint. There actually, because of the change we're doing at the front of the site, there's actually a decrease in impervious area on the project overall of about 1,000 square feet. So that, that's favorable. The, the, the new loading area basically is, is being put back where the old one was. So there were docks in these locations, those docks would be eliminated and repurposed with window bays, et cetera, for showroom viewing. The, the next six loading dock doors would be actually the functioning loading dock doors for the project. There'd be two trailer docks, so those would be the WB67 vehicles that would be coming in two or three times a week. They would be coming in to basically stock and supply the facility. The remaining four would be more box truck or smaller tractor trailers that would be basically distributing, you know, to other stores or other locations in the area. And then on, as I said before, the, the customer pickup area for contractors would be on the opposite side. So the traffic would actually be separated and separated. The last two loading docks would be, remain open. That's exactly where we're going to be putting the dumpster pad for the project. So that way, any, any box removal that they need to do, they're able to basically just open the door and drop it into the dumpster and then close the door back up. And that would be protected with covers, et cetera, as they go through that process. Currently, there are two compactor chutes that are in this area. Those would be removed as a concrete pad, and there's some jersey barriers, those would be removed. And the parking would be extended down the side of the building on the west-hand side. There would also be, as part of the office, there would be some training areas, I'm showing in here internally. And the rest would be basically rack storage within the building for the use of FW Web. So that's the basic overall site aspect of things. I can have Andy go through the operational stuff. And some of the exterior finishes, and you can take a look at as well along the way. We have supplied those as well. So, this is where the existing docks are. And these, this is where the windows would be placed along, some of the docks are being removed. Okay, on the left side of the building. The right side of the building, this is where the existing office area is, is one of the doors where they would be able to access. And this is the customer pickup area where there would be a set of sliding doors that would open up. Man door here, a couple of windows, and then there'll be further down, which is probably... Like one sheet down. Yeah, okay, further down here, that's where we have the overhead door opening for some of the larger products that come in and out for the contractor use. So there, there's not going to be a lot of work on the, on the exterior of the building aside from, you know, refinishing some areas with branding, more than, more than actual new facades and stuff like that. Cleaning up and maintaining some of the loading docks, removing others and replacing them with, with some of the office, some of the showroom type structure that would be utilized in those areas.
Now, can you pull up the whole site again and just relook at exactly its proximity to the rest of the industrial park?
Of the aerial?
Yeah, I want to see the street view.
So, one of the things that this shows is the intensive use of the loading dock area that was previous, on the previous user. The loading dock area use on a new proposal is going to be significantly less. Mainly the, the, the main trucks coming in to deliver the products will be there two or three times a week. The smaller trucks coming in and out of the site from that loading dock area will be maybe leaving two or three times a day. But versus the previous use, which had tractors coming in and out. I don't know, I want to say 24/7. We actually worked on their new location for Imperial over in Worcester. So they have, they have a lot more, they still have a lot more docks, they still crowd them as much as they are right here.
Bet it out just a little bit, so we can get an idea of where Rockaway and all of that.
Yep. So, Rockaway Road is in the backside here to the north. So the wetland that we showed in the plan is essentially right in this area here. So this area is a, is a pretty good buffer between, between the two projects. We're not proposing to change any of that area. We're not extending into the area behind here. There's a little cleanup of the pavement over in this area here, more or less to square it off. But that's also where we're putting the new drainage on the site, but there's really no changes here aside from fencing on the backside of the property. There's no extension of the work.
So in that heavy green area, there's no houses that we can't see? That are under the trees or something?
We could go to, we could go to, um... Do you have, um... Yeah, the other one, you could do, what you could do, Oliver, you'll come up with a clean map.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that plan actually shows where the buildings are. They're actually up further over in one of the streets. There's no, there's no buildings in this location here. This is actually a previous size, previous size wetland in this location right here.
And that's the town parcel?
Yeah, the town of that landlocked piece.
Are there any existing oil and water separators in the pavement area?
No. There's nothing.
I would like to see some.
Well, we have, we are adding a storm scepter at the end of that treatment train that we're, that we're creating. We're basically rebuilding the drainage and then putting a storm scepter in at the end to pick up all the TS, do TSs removal, et cetera. And that does the same thing.
Does that do oil and water separations?
Yep.
Garbage do.
Yeah.
Does the garbage do.
Now, sight lighting?
Yeah, right now, the existing lighting that's on the building is proposed to be basically the same as it is. It's not going to change. It might be upgraded or replaced, but where the lighting is on the plan is essentially meant to stay the same. Am I correct in that, Andy?
Mm-hmm.
And do you have screening on the dumpster area?
We don't. We basically just put a concrete pad with, because we're unsure at this point what type of dumpster structures they're going to be having. And where we're not really facing any residential uses in the area, we felt it would be, it would end up getting banged up with the, it's more of an industrial use than it is a, a commercial. You know, if you had at a McDonald's or a Wendy's, you'd want to surround it and you could protect it more. But in these here, I, I have, my experience is the dumpster, the dumpster screening on a project like this would end up getting banged up pretty, pretty good. And we're not really, um, we're not really facing anything residential. We can show it that way.
Yes.
What are the typical hours of operation for FW Web?
Um, 6:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday mornings till 12:00 typically. The showroom is open late, like one or two days a week, like 5:00, 5:10 or two, so you might get one off for one person, but...
Are you going to keep the current location also?
Nope, it's for sale.
And the, the traffic is really going to decrease substantially?
What was there?
Imperial.
Yeah, 18-wheelers and...
Yes, yeah, they had three locations before, they consolidated over to 150 Blackstone. And I think that we put, I want to say 40 or 50 loading docks, just in their space at that building. But there might be more, I think there were a total of 72 on that side, I can't remember exactly how many they took.
Nick, anything?
No.
Scott?
I mean, refurcings, right district. Actually a great usage to me. The parking looks a bit tight to me. I mean, I see you have the proposed truck access easement for the, for the, for the loading docks. What about in the back? I mean, if you... Again, I could be wrong, I mean, John, you may be, may know more on that part.
In the back of the building?
It's going to be tight for these cars getting in and out without entering, you know, Kaden Webb Systems land or, or your neighborhood to the left.
Yeah, this has all been over time, and I'll let, Andy's had more conversations with your body owners than I have. But over time, everyone's kind of just driven everywhere.
Cause it's all concrete anyway.
Right, so I'll let Andy talk to that.
Yeah, it's basically a shared access drive right now. Yeah, it's basically a shared access drive right now. You've met with Kaden. They want to keep everything the same as far as that goes, so.
I figured as much, but I mean, that's really...
Yeah, one of the things, if we can bring up the existing conditions plan again, one of the things that we did do is go to existing conditions. Some of the parking that was in this area was actually straddling the property line. And in order for us to be able to count it as being on our property, we actually rotated it. And if you can go to the proposed conditions, you can see what we did. We changed it all so that we actually would have the spaces on ours, so we actually would have, you know, control of those spaces as we went through.
I think everybody's seen it. They required 100, and they had 80.
Right. Yeah, so we are also seeking a special permit from ZBA for that, as well as special permit for the use itself, which is required in the Bible. And we're in front of Conservation Commission as well tomorrow night for that.
That's all I got.
John?
Yeah, you said you have a storm scepter, so a manhole at the very end before the outfall, the wetlands, but I don't see it shown on the plans or doing any of your details at all.
Standard manhole, standard catch basin. Okay, we'll have to add that to the plan. And at the same time, we're going to remove that reference to LeBaron.
Thank you. If you look at it, say LeBaron, founder...
I think it's just the ironworks that took the whole.
Yes.
You know, it's not...
But when you say LeBaron, founder, equal, if LeBaron doesn't exist, what's equal? Nothing. Thank you.
We'll take it. We'll make sure we take care of that.
All right.
Andy?
Somebody listen.
Two special permits with the ZBA up to the chair.
Next week? I'll see if I can look for next week.
I believe so, yes.
They use one for the reduction in parking and then conservation tomorrow.
Yes.
Wendy?
You mentioned, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the outside storage. You guys have any idea what that's going to be yet and what spaces those are going to take?
Yep, it's new product. Pipe, you know, PVC, that type of thing, propane tanks, sometimes oil tanks, but all new products.
Is it going to be covered with a roof or anything?
Nope, just a fence jard, yep.
That'll be back here.
Yep, behind the building, yep.
Yeah, there are cantilever racks, which that, I guess those are where the pipes are going to be going.
Yes.
This one here, its location may change just for, you know, we don't know exactly where they're going to want to put it. Once they get out there and start moving things around, they, they end up, you know, they may end up putting it here, it may end up...
Snow storage. It doesn't interfere with the flow pattern?
No, no, the parking spaces meet the requirement for space and for maneuverability.
John, did you have...
You know, snow storage.
We're going to store snow where they've been storing snow.
This is a tough site.
It doesn't fill me with confidence.
Your point's well taken, but I'm not sure what they did before. We're not proposing to expand any pavement areas. I think we'd have a lot more, create a lot easier front than it probably is under current conditions. Under current conditions, it's very tight. There's a lot more room on the new plan. There's more room to, especially along those pedestrian walkways and stuff like that, to allow access from all the different parking areas to each other.
If they were snow, it'd have to be in the back, but if the trees are that close, you know, that's the head of the tree, but it might be a little room underneath the way they get something. Other than that, it has to be removable.
Right, so in the back area here, if we can go back to the site plan, if the rendering plan would be good, please. The wetland area is actually a good distance away from, if we zoom in here. So the wetland area is a good distance away, so we could do some snow storage in the backside over here, overflow. I always say that we're going to take the snow that we have, we're going to push to the sides. It's probably going to, there's been some, I know that Kaden had talked about the fact they worked with the former owner with snow removal on the project, so I'm sure that we'll work with them on it. But I mean, there are areas to push, you know, the day-to-day storms aside, but on the, the multiple storms or the really heavy storms, yes, snow removal will be required, yes.
We do have some extra parking spaces too, so that'll give us a little bit of...
And Webb will own the building?
Yes.
They have extra parking spaces here, according to how you know.
Right, let me touch on that a little bit. I know it's not part of the purview technically of this board because of the, we're being pushed in front of the ZBA with it, but the parking, the parking requirement requires a total of 101 parking spaces. We're providing 80 spaces. The actual parking demand, and this is in a letter that goes to the ZBA, the actual parking demands of the applicant based upon the number of employees, its customers, is approximately 69 spaces. This is based on the current anticipated future employees and an allowance for six parking spaces for the showroom and 15 spaces for self-service area. So under current need, they're looking at 37 employees with an additional 11 employees in the future. So that gets you up to 48. And then if you add 15 and six, in other words, we have the, if we go back out of the site, main site area.
Sixty-nine.
So we have these six spaces right in here. It is, you know, 12 and four around the front door, so there's 16, but we're saying 15. So we'd actually have enough room with all of our employees and 15 contractors there and six people in the showroom. We still have 10 extra spaces with that, with that demand right there. 11 extra spaces. So there are some extra spaces based upon our need, not based upon the requirement of what the town's requiring for parking.
Can you go to the wetlands again? I'm sorry, Ron. Were you proposing to put the snow, it's right where you cantilever pipe racks are?
That's what I'm saying, it might move. That one that's along the edge.
Yeah, yeah. So it might be that we use this area, it could be some of the snow storage.
Does your parking lot currently usually look pretty full with contractors and just off-street people? Nick, anything else? Scott, John, Wendy?
I just want to be sure those detectable warning panels are going to be at every one of the exits and entrances to the parking lot. I only see one on the plan, but I'm assuming they're all going to be at any one of the entrances, the showroom. Anywhere you're stepping into the parking lot from, you have that detectable warning? Yep.
Yeah, this is detectable warning right here. And this is detectable warning along here.
One in the front, yep.
And I believe that there's also one right here.
Okay, and there's another one right there.
This is not, this is not, this is right into the buildings, we don't have to do one right there. But from the sidewalk, from the pedestrian way to a parking area, drivable area, that's where those come into play.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment? Well, there being no public comment, we've got to wait until they have conservation and two zones on. When is your zoning? You said conservation is tomorrow night, zoning is?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Okay, so you could be ready by the 30th, October 30th meeting?
Yeah, we, it's a tight schedule. I'll let Andy get into that.
You want to wait until the first meeting in November?
No, no, no.
Say it any other way.
We actually thought the next meeting was on the 23rd.
Town meeting, annual town meeting took our...
That's better. Okay, so if that's what we have to do, unless you wanted to do it as a vote contingent upon the other approvals. It's worth a try. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask.
Now, how's everyone feel about peer review? I don't think we need it.
I wouldn't mind just in-house town inspection, taking a peek.
In-house?
Yeah, we did, we did meet with the DCG group. They went through that. A lot of, actually, the front area here came out of his comments when we were at that day.
Sorry, I didn't mind. Can you guys talk to the Auburn Water District?
Yes, we're doing a flow test on Thursday, pump test. And they'll be there.
Remember, that came up with DCG.
Yep.
Again, still no public comment? If being none?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to October 30th?
I think the motion to continue the public hearing on October 30th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
I'm taking your time. Just need to assign them.
Sure. Yeah. We're at least aiming the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Go Sox.
Okay. Next, we have a 7:20 public hearing, a new applicant. The applicant is Auburn Water District, a site plan approval under Section 3.2, 4.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the Prospect Street Water Storage Tank Replacement Project located at 201 Prospect Street in Auburn. Is everyone familiar with where these tanks are? Have a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is open?
You can't get it on the camera.
Good evening, Chairman Brooks. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the water superintendent for the Auburn Water District. This is John Gregory. He's our consultant from Tater and Howard. And we're here tonight to present to the board a site plan for a two-phase replacement of the water storage tanks up on the top of Prospect Street, which have reached their life expectancy. And John will go through it. What we're proposing to do, schedule-wise, probably the first phase would probably begin construction in the spring.
There's two tanks?
There's two tanks right now.
You're going to be doing both of them?
Eventually. The first tank that's up front, it's a little bit taller, but it's skinnier, that's a half million gallon tank. The tank in the rear is a 2 million gallon tank.
Which one are you going to work on first?
The half million, the one up front. It's the older tank, and that would be the first phase. So with the board's permission, I'd like to turn it over to John.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you state your name already? Did you have it written?
I got it.
John Gregory, J O N. So as Ken mentioned, we have two tanks at this site. Looking to do this in two different phases. Phase one, which will start construction hopefully next spring, is replacement of the front tank. It's an existing 500,000 gallon welded steel tank. It's constructed back in the 1952, Ken?
Yes, 1952.
500,000 gallon capacity. One thing to make note of here is that these tanks, we looked at a couple of different options. We looked at possibly rehabilitating these tanks. It's been determined that costs for rehabilitating versus the cost for constructing new tanks, really after our cost benefit analysis in the long run, considering these tanks are approaching the end of their useful life, basically determined demolishing these tanks in a phased methodology and installing new tanks is going to be the greatest cost benefit to the district in the long run. These new tanks, which are both proposed to be glass fused to steel tanks, bolted style, identical tanks to the ones that were recently installed up on Leicester Street, we were here last fall for that project there.
When you say bolted tanks, you mean riveted or...
No, no.
Thousand of them.
Thousand, yeah. So, so again, this project, brand new tanks, we can do this in phases. We have two tanks at the site. The district can run their system off one tank at a time. So we'll do the first tank, complete that, get that in service. That's a million gallon tank to replace a 500,000 gallon tank. Then, as funding is allowed, which could be a couple of years, could be a year, could be five years from now, we don't know, depends on Ken's operating budget, when he can afford it, he'll go in and replace that second tank.
How big would that be?
That one will also be a million gallon tank. Right now, he has two and a half million gallons worth of storage at the site. That's excess. He doesn't need that much. So going to make them close to identical sized tanks of approximately 1 million gallon capacity. So again, like I said, the second tank would be, we'll say roughly two to five years from now, depending on funding. We've had some initial discussions and figured that we could come in, one-shot deal, talk to you about both these projects and do them in phases and hopefully get through this stage here. Couple of other aspects of this project here, there'll be some site work that needs to be done. There'll be some site grading, new water main, new electrical, underground electrical conduit onsite. All this will be within enclosed site there. If you look at the orange area around the perimeter there, that's the existing fence to a hatch and pointing, I'll go ahead and point it out here. So we have existing chain link fence at the site, which encompasses this area here. This is an open area in the front of Prospect Street. Proposing to install some temporary fencing in this area here. That way, the contractor can use this as a staging area for materials, for vehicles. Prospect Street paved area enters into the site in this area here. There's an asphalt apron. We're also proposing a temporary construction entrance, made of riprap, to help pull some of the materials off of the vehicles as they exit the site, minimize any dirt materials excess that will make their way on the Prospect Street. There will be a requirement if Prospect Street does get dirty from on-site materials, contractor will have to clean that up, maintain that as a clean area.
What do you mean by dirty?
Excuse me, can you hold your comments and we'll ask for public comment at the end?
Oh, okay.
All right?
By the end, I forget.
Want some paper? You got some paper?
Yeah. Essentially, this is what we would describe as a tire scrubber. It's just going to remove any materials that could get stuck on the tires right entering Prospect Street itself. Be some miscellaneous stumps on the site that are going to be removed. We will be installing a nine-foot wide asphalt apron around the edges of the tank, perimeter of each tank here, very similar to what's already onsite. This helps to have a nice flat area, maintenance area, if any maintenance needs to be done on the tank or, I think we already used that to kind of encapsulate the sweating of the tank as well.
It also controls vegetation, keeps the grass and the weeds away from the tank, dries the tank, and just makes it, it's easy to mow that way, so.
We're looking at a net decrease in the impervious area on site. As we mentioned, this 2 million gallon tank, much larger area, that's encompassing as impervious area at this time with the asphalt apron area. That'll be less, slightly more, and a half million gallon tank, that'll be, that'll be a 1 million gallon tank. But the net result's going to be a little over 1,800 square feet less impervious area at the site.
So they're sitting on existing concrete pads?
That's correct.
And you're going to demo those?
Yes. Each new tank will be installed roughly within the same footprint of the existing tank. Obviously, the 2 million gallon tank is a larger tank, so it'll be a larger area that needs to be demolished, foundation, everything will be taken out.
Taken out with a new slab of wood.
Correct, yes. As Ken said, we're looking at stage one coming up this spring. So unless Ken has something else to add, that's pretty much our overview of the project.
Paul Park, just to throw some numbers at you, preliminarily, at this point, it looks like a $4 million project. So you can appreciate how we have to, we just finished Leicester Street, that was...
For both tanks?
Yes, so we just finished Leicester Street. That was a little bit more than $2 million, so money's going out pretty fast. Unfortunately, all these tanks are coming to age at the same time. And as John already, that in today's market and everything else... And as John already stated, that in today's market and everything else, we are a throwaway society, but these tanks have been here 50, 60 years, and it just doesn't make any sense financially, logistically, operational-wise, it's best to replace them.
So the front one is in 52?
52. The rear one was in 67.
One thing of note, each of these tanks has, for lack of a better term, sprung a leak within recent years. Ken, I think the 2 million one was earlier this year as a matter of fact.
Yeah, we've had several in-whole leaks that we've been able to fix with lowered the water and welded from the outside. And that's indicative of that the inside is not up to snuff, and you're gonna keep getting more of them.
What will have you, what will be the method of demolition?
Torch cutting, basically.
Okay. Are those tanks, is they're currently painted lead paint?
The front tank was rehabilitated late 90s, mid 90s.
Mid 90s.
It was de-leaded. The rear tank was overcoated, but it does have lead.
In between this lead?
Below, yes.
So the front tank as it stands, has no lead?
Preliminary test, Mr. Chairman, and we're gonna do some advanced paint chip analysis, but the preliminary is lead-free, which would be indicative...
On the front tank?
Yes, it was de-leaded.
Which will be done first.
And the painting that was done at that time was already in the mid 90s, lead-free. The rear tank, irrespective of its age, there is a lead component to the paint. It hasn't been analyzed to what...
Is that one peeling or is it...
No, it's tight. I have to...
I think sometimes if you torch cut, you may have to just remediate the lead where you do the torch cut.
And that's what we're proposing for.
Now, is there anything inside those tanks when you're doing demolition that is hazardous or would need remediation?
No. What they've done...
All metal, they're not lined with anything?
No, they're just bare metal. And what they do is they, what they did in Leicester Street, if we go forward with the same thing, the demolition contractor presents a health program which goes over site health, he puts tarps down, he puts atmospheric monitors up, his workers are all protected, and they go up there in two bucket lifts, or one or two, and they start cutting pieces, and they drop them in the middle of the tank. And they keep doing that down until he gets to ground level, and they pick them up, put them in dumpsters, and off it goes for recycling. So there is no, and they have tarps, and any debris that's accumulated gets put in drums and is transported off-site by an industrial hazardous waste company.
So it seems that there'll be, there's not gonna be any remediation specific required on the front one, but there will be when you do the second one, probably?
Yes, that is correct. The paint is tight. That's how people look at it.
All right, I'm just asking respect to it peeling and all of that, you know? All over the ground.
No, it's tight, and that's why they put the tarps before, when they demolish it.
Just a double assurance.
Yes, exactly.
Give them a better chance to, if paint chips do come off during the process, they make their way onto the tarps, it's much easier to vacuum up properly disposable.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the available funding, and we've made application to the State Revolving Fund for some low-interest loans, we're not knowing how successful we're gonna be, it's not free money. It's low interest, and sometimes with the inspections and the paperwork, you kind of sometimes question that. But we've made application for that, and we're waiting to hear probably beginning of the year if we are successful. And so when that funding becomes available for the rear tank, any lead-borne bearing paint, when that second tank's removed, it will be all removed from the site.
And the new tanks you said are gonna be glass fused?
Yeah, it's...
Another steel?
It's a porcelain coating on steel, very similar to your kitchen sink, not your stainless steel ones, the old ones. So it's porcelain coated inside and out in a furnace. They bolt them together, they seal them, and it's just like your kitchen sink, never have to be repainted again.
It's a lot better?
Yes. Yeah, and they go up...
Interior and exterior?
Interior, interior is white. The tanks we put in Leicester Street are dark blue, very similar to your, it's like a cobalt blue. And residents seem to like it better than the green. And they have an aluminum dome roof on them. They build them from the ground up, they build the roof and they jack it up. And if they can't build it in that thing, there will be no cranes or anything, they just jack them up. Matter of probably, demo will probably take probably a few weeks, couple of weeks, completely remove the tank, then you have to build a foundation. And the million gallon tank will probably take, probably what, three weeks to a month?
Three weeks to about.
A month for a cement. They move right along.
How long do you wait for the cure on the slab?
The slab, they embed the ring, they can start building on it, we get the first concrete spread back. They get, they're starting on there about a week, but there's no load on, it's all supported by rebar, and it's allowed to cure. By the time you wait for the tanks, there's like a 12-week wait period for the tank, so a lot of times the foundations are in, sitting, waiting for the tank to show up.
Concrete's a 28-to-8 cure to typically 4,000 to 5,000 PSI. Majority of the weight you're gonna see is gonna be the water anyways, that's built, so it's gonna take upwards three to four weeks.
How thick is that slab?
Pardon?
How thick is the slab?
Center's eight, and then it gets thicker as you approach the ring wall. It's almost 18 inches on the end, so. It's pretty standard for water supply, just a concrete floor, and it's waterproofed, and all the panels are put together with a mastic.
Now, is, on top of the pad, is the tank, the bottom of the tank is not the concrete, is it?
Yes.
How do you get it attached to that?
They have a ring they embed in the foundation, and they put the upper panels...
Panels into it?
Yep, they all bolt together. And so it's the starter ring is the key to keep our...
The foundation is poured in two different segments.
Frost wall, and then you have the slab.
Well, the footing.
And then the slab on top of that.
It'd be, it's gonna be a better water quality than...
Yeah, it's, there's no paint to deteriorate in there. Every, all the mastic that's inside to seal up is all NSF approved for potable water before the tanks go into service. They're filled, they perform an initial bacteria test and a volatile organic compound test. Three days later, they do another bacteria test and another round of VOC testing. It's all DEP approved, you don't do anything without their approval. This project will be submitted to them for their approval.
And the existing water in the tank, how do you drain that? Or do you just run it into the tanks?
We try to save as much as we can, but some of the piping doesn't allow that. The small tank has a drain that is tied into the street drainage, so we just don't dip it on.
Stormwater?
It goes into the stormwater system on Prospect Street.
Nick, any questions?
You guys, gentlemen, may have already answered this. Start to finish, how long is project?
Well, tank one, the first tank. Yeah, by the time we get in there, excavate, concrete foundation, build the tank, put it into service, it'll go three to four months, I think is what we're looking at.
Depends on the winter. We can take the small tank offline, we don't really need it, especially during the winter of the capacity. I have excess capacity, excess capacity, water aging, so we're trying to bring down how much water we have stored up there, which is more than adequate for fire protection. So if we put, do the first tank, I can live out of a million gallon tank, at which point the second tank gets replaced. So like you said, Mr. Brooks, we go from 2 and 1/2 million down to 2 million, so. So yeah, it depends when they, they could tear that down in, under, you know, winter conditions, and then remove the concrete foundation, and once we get more favorable weather conditions in the spring, they can start pouring.
Just out of curiosity, if you were to do both tanks at once, same turnaround time or substantially?
Yeah, they have to be sequential.
First tank, similar to what we did with Leicester Street, the first tank would have to be built, put into service before the second tank.
Make sure that one's holding.
The demo tank, demo time on the second tank's gonna be...
Substantially aligned, I imagine.
I'm sorry, what was?
To avoid service interruption.
Right.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Ken, does that, where does that water get pumped from? Where do you get the water there?
The water, and this is a high-pressure system. The water from the high-pressure system comes from our treatment plant on West Street, which we just spent about $5 million bucks on building and everything. And then the two wells at, behind my office on Church Street, that water is a high-pressure system, and that goes all the way into anything.
And it gets pumped up and into the tank?
Yeah, and then the tank fills up a little, and then it shuts off, and then it drops, and it's a cycle.
So when water sits in those for an extended, it can stay in there for a long time and still have good quality?
Yes, we check chlorination monthly, and as part of, it's a DEP requirement, but it shouldn't even have to be, we install mixers that mixes the tank. The ones we have at Leicester Street, I think we're turning that tank over four times a day with a mixer that just takes the water and slowly moves it around and keeps it from getting water aging, that's what they call it, so.
Also twofold, it helps in the wintertime, if you have some stagnant water, you can get icing in these tanks, so if you're moving the water, you're not getting quite the turnover you normally would during summer months, higher water demand. The mixing will keep the ice from forming inside the tank, which can be problematic with damage to the tank and clogging of the inlet outlet pipe, many different things.
Anything else, Nick?
No.
Scott? John?
I got a couple of questions. What's the bottom of the tank gonna be coated with the concrete epoxy, astic?
Actually, we're looking at, we're in a 50% stage on the final design on this, the development of plans and specs. We're looking at that option, whether to be a flexible epoxy coating, because concrete does move, as you know, and if you put anything too rigid, it cracks just like an eggshell. So we were looking at that option, and any coatings would be safe for potable water, so.
On the disposal of the first tank that has, or the second tank that has the lead in it, would that be considered hazardous waste and have to have a manifest and all that that Ken would have to sign for it to be trucked out of town to a facility?
It's strictly on the tank demolition contractor, they have to provide us with all that information.
He always gotta sign this up.
We, yeah, if it goes to scrap, as long as it's identified, and they put them in roll-offs and take them away, we did not have to on the first one, actually I signed one for the barrel of paint chips that they, so I signed that, yes. But the steel itself, they know, you know, as long as they advise the scrap dealer that's recipient of it, in the world of scrap, the demolition subcontractor, like I said, submits a health and safety plan, and he has to have all his permits in line before he starts work.
And that's just to do with the handling, 'cause then it just gets remelted and used huge furnaces?
Going somewhere.
And they draw off the dross and whatever impurities are in it.
Couple more questions. Your conduit that you're putting in underground up there at the tank, is that gonna be encased in concrete?
The...
For power lines?
Yeah, there's an existing 120 volt service that goes to the rear tank now. We do it, it's per electrical code. It's not in a public way, kind of sand encasement was satisfactory for the last one.
And my last question is, on your second tank, I don't know if that's the feed line or the line that feeds the system, but you have a 16-inch insertion valve? And right above it, you're gonna cut in a 12-by-6 height and tee? Why would you need an insertion valve if you're shutting down the main? Why wouldn't you just bolt on a 16-inch valve?
Well, in order to isolate tank two and drain tank one, Ken doesn't have a valve right now that's operational enough to be able to do that. So in order to keep that tank in service, we're proposing to install that insertion valve, keep everything in service. The valve is in place, he can close that valve, isolate the tank, he won't have to waste all the water that's in that 2 million gallon tank, and then...
John, maybe just, the existing small tank is fed off directly off of Prospect Street through a small pipe. We're gonna eliminate that and run both...
So they gotta cap the line?
Yeah, we're gonna run both line, both tanks off the 16. There's no valve to shut the big tank off right now. So the valve and the hydrant would allow us to drain that, the big tank, and when the time comes, and use that hydrant to drain it for any water that we can't...
I know why you're putting the hydrant in, it's just the reason for the insertion valve.
So we can shut the back tank off and leave the front tank in service.
Okay, so when you put the insertion valve in, it says you're gonna, wherever it's best located, additional pipe, is it cast iron pipe, ductile iron pipe, or whatever?
This, the 16, we always make the contractors check, 'cause it comes in that vintage, I think that was put in in 72.
It could be either way.
That could be either way, so we make them check it. The OD is the same on cast versus ductile, except for real old pit cast, which can screw you all up. We always make them test pit it, throw an OD tape on it, verify it before they start breaking into it.
And once you put the valve insertion tee in, and then you go to cut in your hydrant and your, the 12-by-6 tee, how much pressure's on that backside of that 16-inch insertion valve? 'Cause I don't see any restraint required for that.
25 pounds.
25 pounds?
They're only 50 feet high, so it's an inline valve.
Right, you're taking out inline pipe, so what's gonna keep that from wanting to walk off? 25 pounds is a lot of pressure on a 16-inch line. I wouldn't stand in front of it, would you?
Kind of, when they put the insertion valve in, it's all wrapped, there's no removal of pipe.
And then you're cutting out a section of pipe ahead of it toward the tank, your pressure's this way on the 16, what keeps that from wanting to walk that last piece of pipe out?
It's all filled in linearized.
Yeah, I mean, we're...
And restrain joints throughout.
Yeah, but you don't know, you have restrained joints on your existing pipe. You can put all the restraining joints you want on the new stuff, it's not gonna do any good of a side into the old stuff.
We can take a look at that, John, just to make sure that, you know...
Hate to see somebody with that line pressurized, take that section of pipe out, and put all new pipe in with the reducer, increaser there, all the way to the tank, and all of a sudden that 16-inch main starts to walk off.
Isolate further back the valves if need be temporarily.
That's why you put in the 16-inch valve.
Back at the street.
Back at the street we could.
Short term. Short term for a four-hour shutdown in time. Something that would be worked out with the contractor. We do have, I forget what the exact distance is from that insertion valve to the coupling, there is section of pipe, we're not talking two, three feet.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not the section of pipe to the valve, it's that side of the, to the right side of that valve that's gonna walk out, not the other way around.
We'll take a look at that, because that's why we wanna look, we couldn't, 'cause we don't wanna end up on a bell.
Oh yeah, you're gonna take a test pit to find it.
Yep, so.
But it does have means to take the pressure off of that pipe if need be on a temporary basis, so certainly don't want anyone getting hurt.
That's all you're...
Wendy?
I have a couple. So you mentioned that the other project, tank two, could be a few years out, two, maybe even four years out, depending on funding. Site plan approval, great thing of site plan approval is typically only good for two years. If the board wanted to consider an automatic renewal of any capacity, it would have to come as a condition, or the applicant could request an extension two years down the road. Just wanted to make that clear.
And that's understood, and we wanted to take this opportunity not to piecemeal the project, we wanted to make everybody aware of the entire project. Believe me, if I had the money, I'd get a better price replacing two tanks. This is costing me money in the long run to sequence it.
Is it possible to get funding to do both tanks?
Well, you say funding is that...
I know it's a low interest rate, all rates are gonna go up.
No, no, my inflow of revenue versus my outflow of bonds on West Street, we're still paying bonds on there, now we're starting to pay bonds on Leicester Street, there's only so much that we can financially float, not overextending ourselves. There are other components of the system that we've been upgrading, this just happens to be, well, they're more costly ones. And so I wish I could tell you, I wish I could sign a contract today for both, and I'd get a better deal, I'd beat the tariffs that are coming. There's a whole number of pluses to do it now, but I have to deal with the damn, and yeah, we would, anything the board would entertain as far as continuance, or, just so you've seen it, and, you know, we wanna go forward.
Do they are conditioned to automatic renewals?
Yes.
An additional two years.
Yes, the board could consider. I would assume you know there's going to be need for police details as needed for loading or unloading of materials. I would imagine most likely in the mornings, I'm sure that someone may be able to speak out if there's a bus stop nearby. I'm sure that might be a...
Many buses.
It appears that, actually.
That's why we kind of have that lay-down area up front, so they can pack trucks in. The tank itself comes on, I think, two flatbeds.
Go to the other one.
It's a big erector set and the only other trucks would be, would be probably four concrete trucks to pour the foundation, pump truck, and the crew, you know, the demolition, he just has a bunch of roll-offs and they bring one, he fills one up, takes it away, so.
Now, they leave the tractor trailers there and take the parts off of it and restack it on the ground. Some men drop them, take the tractor away.
Yep, the second tank for Leicester Street was stored up on our West Street facility for the winter and it's seven or eight pallets. And they're independent truckers, so they're not leaving the trucks. So they unload them right away and the truck leaves.
Would it be reasonable to ask construction vehicles to not be parked within the right way since you have the staging area?
I think we actually, that was when we were working on conditions. Yep, they'll have the pack on site.
Okay, that's a good idea.
John?
Still a couple more, so. So, construction hours that we've been doing lately, with the other projects, we started with the standard hours, but then you guys needed an extension to get it done quicker. So this is kind of more of a group discussion for everybody. Our standard hours in the past have been 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM Monday through Friday. However, we've noticed that work tends to take place early as 7:00 AM in commercial areas. Now, the call is, do you want it to start later and end sooner, or do you want the longer hours to get the project over with sooner? So that becomes the question.
We propose 7:30 to 5:00 in hopes that that would be something that is...
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Any weekend or holiday work would have to be pre-approved by the board, by the town, and by the owner.
Includes Saturday? Because Saturday, we typically have a four-hour window.
Yeah, we don't, that's a...
You don't work on Saturday.
We don't give it to them upfront if we run into bad weather or something else happens. That's a little...
You're limited to Monday through Friday.
Yeah, and, you know, and these crews that build these tanks, they come from all around the country. So they're here, staying in a hotel and...
The whole weekend.
The longer they can work, within reason, the quicker the job gets done, like you said, Matt. So 7:30 and we were, you know, pretty strict with it, you know, 5:00 or 6:00 or whatever it is, but, you know, we're trying to get the schedule of this job, if we start early spring, by early summer will be done and that disturbance would be gone.
Other than the trucks, which seem to be not limited, other than in the beginning, mostly to the beginning, what type of noise comes from this?
You may hear an impact wrench where they just screw the bolts and the noisiest part of it is during the demolition, but they fall them in and that does really minimize the sound. But there are, you know, maybe a pneumatic hammer on a piece of equipment to break up the concrete, but it's usually pretty quiet.
Generators or...
Yeah, they've used pretty quiet suppressed generators, so.
Did manage to store the generators and operation heaters on occasion, who may not need that here. Managed to get them to store them on sides of the tank that were away from the residential properties of that Leicester Street, as a reminder, maybe ambient noise there, so.
Yeah, this is, there's a few more neighbors here.
Yeah, we're a step back from the road a bit, which is helpful.
Was up at Leicester Street.
One of the other questions I have is related to landscaping buffers. Is this an opportunity to add buffering from any direct orders, or is there anything hard to place, slatted fence or...
There's pretty good vegetation all around the existing chain link fence, with the exception of the front chain link fence, which is hurting in this part of this project. That front section that goes across it will be replaced with black vinyl. We're going to get rid of the barbed wire on that front-facing spec and it'll be black vinyl. It seems, it tends to disappear, much more appeasing, and we're going to continue to landscape that front in the specs that that construction area that's next to the road will be restored to, you know...
Landscaped.
We mow it quite often, we have the stone wall up there to maintain that and trees, we got to keep them away from the fence because they do two things, they fall on the fence and wreck the fence and it collapses the fence and we have to have somebody fix it. And trees have to be a distance, so if they do fall, they don't fall on the tanks. During the big ice storm, the tanks took some hits from trees, that, all those stumps that you show there, those are all trees that we cut down after the ice storm, the big ice storm, because they fell in or near the tank and so everything within the fence was cut off, clear cut. So we wish you could landscape it, but for security purposes, we like to see the bottom of the tanks driving by if someone got in there, we want to know.
Do you have them lit at night on the bones?
No, no, it's a good neighbor, but the fence is closed and locked all the time and, you know, kids will be kids, but we would like when people drive by, if they saw somebody in the fence, to give us a call, give the police a call, as opposed to having landscaping that kids could, you know, hide behind.
That's true.
The ladder is secured, it's got a lock, so that's, and it's up 15 feet.
Till you get to the bottom, Ron.
Yes, and it used to be 10 feet and kids could, so.
Last question I have, so, any appearances on this structure, like radio towers?
No, the only thing we will put on this tower is some antenna mounts for future, if any communication would be town or our communications. We provide antenna locations for the fire department, the police department, ham radio, in addition to towers on the Leicester Street tanks. So we will put the mounts up there, two or three on the top of this tank, if they ever wanted to locate up in this area to improve their network. So we do that at no charge to them, so.
John?
It's a requirement of the contract for tanks to be made in the United States to steal, picked in Amal in the United States.
SRF.
Yeah, it's SRF, that is definitely a requirement. I believe that is part of what we've been carrying.
In the past, we have, you know, it's, we're putting the finishing touches, that business is growing.
It's one way to avoid the tariffs, because the tariffs are already here, it's affected my job.
Yeah, so you know about them and, so that would be our first priority to do that. When you go to state revolving fund, that is a requirement, nuts, bolts, steel, made in America. And you sometimes pay for that, that privilege. There are cheaper products out there.
Oh, you're not so much.
Yeah.
You know.
Scott, Elsa?
I'm also.
Is there any public comment? Could you please stand and give your name and address, please?
Two real men, one Sherry, Lena, and Nancy.
Sherry.
Right there.
Number one?
I'm making one.
Number three.
So, I'm on number, but we're number one.
Number one.
So, on this in 1995 or '07, I'm not sure, there was an issue, issue being lead. And I think the neighbors that I have here, and I've talked to a few that was here concerned, but this tank here doesn't have any lead on the outside.
The front, the front tank does not?
No, yeah, and that's going first, but they're making a difference, the lead's still here. My concern would be for the people, because these flaky things over the next few years could still fly up. And I think some of them could lean here to this neighbor over here and maybe at number three. We don't know, but we know that once lead gets into the ground, it tends to like to go deeper into the ground. And it seems to want to create issues that we don't see, it's invisible, but being a clinician, I...
That's my big concern. I don't know if you had a head count.
We got a lot of kids up here. And that stuff will fly around and go a little further than what this diagram is. So that's my concern with this one, you know. I don't like the water pressure either, it's not that good. But, and the other thing that we just brought up was antennas. Now, about 19, 2011, we had a meeting with the police department, the fire department, and we kind of settled everything so that we wouldn't have to have antennas over here because we found that we're not the highest in town, Crow Hill is the highest in the fire department and the police department, they're pretty, they're going to put their antennas over there. I thought that was a dead issue. Seems like it's being brought up again. There are some kids that we have in the neighborhood that have leukemia. I don't like antennas up, so that's another issue I have. So I don't want to go back to 1995, but there was an issue. The other thing is, couldn't you put like an adhesive around the larger tank that holds it in? The answer is yes, you can, right? There's an adhesive spray that you can put in that will hold that loose paint in.
I'm not aware of that.
I'm aware of it. So I checked it out. I don't know the name and I'm sure it's quite easy to find, and I'm sure Matthew can figure that one out. Right, Matthew?
I was just thinking of the infomercial.
It's not that, I know you can. All my football players and Matthew and Ryan and Michael, oh, Michael's brother, Nicholas. But the other thing is, there's going to be a traditional inspection time coming around after, after the first finish of the two tanks, so that we know everything's going okay. The neighborhood, you know, I don't know if there's some thing that you, you know, communicate with the neighbors, say how everything's going.
Mr. Brooks, he asked a number of questions. I've lost count. If I could ask the last one, once the new tanks are up, they are virtually maintenance-free. So we go up there monthly and look at them, make sure this is...
No, that's fine.
We do it, we're required to do it by DEP. I go up there monthly and I sample them, the water in it monthly. We walk around the tanks, make sure everything's in place. So if we note any vandalism or a hole in the fence, we fix it right away. So once the new tanks are up, they are not painted. They are glass fused, just like your old kitchen sink. That's the coating.
Well, I'm thinking of demolition, taking that off. Then you're going to have tops that will hang over there.
This will be, the tops are on the ground, they, they cut the pieces, they fall into the inside of the tank and they leave the shell up and they cut the shell and keep putting all these pieces in until they get down to ground level, then they cut a hole in the sidewall and they go in there with a Bobcat and they cut all the pieces up into transportable size, Bobcat goes up, grabs them, puts them in a dumpster.
Right, and when these things flake off, and some days, of course, we all know we're on a high hill, it's windy. So they may not hit those tops, they may go hit violence house, you know what I mean?
I don't know, I've not, and I've been up on top of the tanks quite a bit and I'm not aware of any flaking paint on the tanks, we don't have that problem here with flaking paint, it's very well adhered and...
It's been identified in some of the neighbors yet?
Yeah, lead leaches normally off of, like a bridge, mass D O T bridge, and that's why we're electing to go with the demolition as versus a rehab, that you would have, as you're saying, sandblasting and anything else, we're paying more money to demolish them in the most environmentally safe method. And once it's gone, it's gone.
I wasn't concerned so much about the money, but I want you to make sure you can have safety.
And the antennas, they, there's one antenna, it's just our communication antenna up there now, they are not, they are not cellular, they're regular, just police radios, which are relatively low wattage. EMF or anything like that is absolutely minimal, it's not a cellular, it's just a regular communication, intermittent use.
Well, at that time, we just wanted to make sure that the communication could be there in profile, was identified as the best place.
We were leaving that option in case they have a need here. We're spending money to put the mounts up just in case they ever wanted to come up here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if a different type of tower were to be added on this, there would be another public hearing and we've received notification in advance?
Ken, you said the second tank in had lead on the outside.
Preliminary tests showed that.
Painted over to contain that.
Yes.
Okay, so the exterior is not lead anymore.
When you sample it, you cut through all the paint layers, the initial test and it's a corrupt test. We're going to be in the process of sending paint chips, we scrape it right off the tank and send all the paint chips and they make an analysis of the degree of lead that may be in it. The outer coating was lead-free, the most outer coating, that was recoded after the first, the incident that you may reference to in the '90s.
After '94.
It was recoded, so coatings after that time are lead-free.
So anything that you'd see, I mean, you could get something peeling from the layer under this layer that could curl and be on the top of the tank. I mean, is it, can we ask that you might go up and inspect it and see what you find?
Sure, I'll provide the board with pictures of the top of the tank.
And then if necessary, have a remediation company come in and clean it?
Sure.
And maybe seal it over with something that we talked about that would be clothed in those chips or something?
If we see flaking, yeah, then we can work with the board on it.
You know.
I know there's concern, and, but my last trip up there, which was at that line ago, it was very bonded, very tight.
Right, I think it would make everyone feel better if they could get something back from us that it's been tested and investigated and if need be, a remediation company comes in and does what they need to do and then seals it.
Yeah, we'll look at options that way, because I can't say, if you remove it, then you're exposing more, so it's a kind of double-edged sword. Also, the paint.
Just anything that might be loose, he said that they found some in people's yads a hunks of it or something like that. Are you all done, sir?
Yes.
Dan?
So my question is, I don't know that much about...
Could you give your name, please?
It's Liz Grubbins, live up on Sunnyside, Sunnyside. I understand what you're saying is that it doesn't seem to be flaking.
No.
So if you were to find that there was no flaking, that's awesome, that's wonderful. But my question would be, when you start cutting that, then you're exposing anything that's under that, that first coating? So how do you make sure that in that case, that the lead isn't seeping out?
The industry standard, when you cut it with an oxy-acetylene torch, it's more for worker safety, the guy that's right there burning it. And depends on the degree of the lead in the coating. You can have a high, the old red lead paint, and Ron, you remember the old bright orange paint used to paint the bridges? That was high concentrations of lead. Newer steel has lesser combinations before they went to no lead. So it depends on the laboratory analysis of the extent of lead, is if it's high enough, they go up there before they cut with a torch, they have a grinding machine that has a vacuum attachment. So anything that's ground off of it gets sucked right up, then on that bare strip, they will cut with a torch.
Okay.
So it's falling.
And they'll probably have to do that, even if you've got one layer of lead?
It's, it depends on...
Whatever the test goes on.
Yep, so we've done a prelim, you know, the next step is a more intensive degree of analysis on it. But it's mostly, the Leicester Street was mostly for worker safety.
There's just not a, there's not a huge buffer around those tanks, the houses are pretty tight around there.
And that's why we're doing everything we can to eliminate the hazard. You know, if, it would be a much different situation if that was, had to be de-leaded and everything else, then the chances...
You'd have to build a big containment.
Yeah, and nothing, nothing is 100%.
And if, and if that, in the process of the torch cutting, you know, there are things they can do there to...
Yeah, like you said, they clean the strip before they cut it.
So would be handled similar to, say it was asbestos?
A specialist.
Right, yeah, no, not quite, the demolition...
It's dangerous?
It's not exactly, but they grind it off for their worker safety, it gets sucked up with a vacuum cleaner. And not a separate hazardous material contractor has to come and do that, the demolition contract, that's within his skill set. And he has quite extensive health and safety plan that he has to deal with.
So I, with all that you've said, I personally, I, and I probably think that a lot of people would agree, I'd rather them get taken out and then you don't have to worry about that lead anymore.
Exactly.
My concern is getting it out and making sure it's safe. And so I sort of agree with this gentleman over here, is if there was some way to communicate with the... with the surrounding homes as to how the project is evolving and...
We can do that.
Any safety issues that we need to know about, that would be helpful to me at least.
Yeah, we'll go up there, take a look. You know, I've been up there several times in the last year, and the paint is... On top of tanks, historically, the coating will wear due to the acid rain and everything else. The coating will actually, like an old piece of furniture that's painted, you wear the edges all the time, the coating will wear off with weatherization as opposed to flaking off. And I'm sorry, it's very tight paint.
Are you done, Liz?
I am, thank you. I have another question. Mary Lazar's, eat all leading house road. So I was there 22 years ago when this was done, and I do have a question on the containment. That was the problem 22 years ago. It wasn't contained very well. I was standing at the bus stop watching lead paint fly when our children was there. So I remember calling the water district and the DEP. OSHA came out. And I remember at the time, they sent a tester that tested the land for a week or two while this was going on to satisfy the people living there. Joyce lives at 199. Her yard was filled with dust. She had to move out of her home. So this is not, and this little guy was just being born then. So, I mean, it wasn't a great situation. It was horrible. We watched it fly. Our kids were standing there, and it was lead paint. So it's not okay to demolish this. And I think of something heavy. If you're going to contain it, and you're going to drop it down, it's going to bounce and things are going to fly. If you're not containing it, I watched it not contained. And the promises were like, it's going to be contained, it's going to be contained. It was not contained. I had to call the DEP, OSHA, Water Department, EPA, and they all came out. They all came out. So, and it was shut down for a while. So they had to stand, I think the water district, I'm not sure who paid for it, but the water district had to hire someone, an independent tester, to come out and monitor that for a week or two because it was flying all over the place. And it's not safe for our kids. It's not safe for anyone. So my guess is, could we, could you put it in your budget for an independent monitor to come out? Someone that's not with your company or not with your company, someone that the planning board can oversee? Say, yeah, is this flying? Is this stuff coming out? And he's right, there are a lot of health problems up on that hill, and you just wonder where it's from.
You know, we want to be transparent here, what happened many years ago. And that's, again, an unfor, you know...
It was unfortunate.
Unfortunate. And that's why we're trying to avoid this election to remove the tanks as opposed to, it would be much deeper for us to...
Right.
Go ahead and sandblast them again and potentially expose the neighborhood to that. We're electing to incur...
So I guess my question to this would be, if you go out for bid, you probably get bidders to do this, do you take the lowest bidder? I feel like the last time they took the lowest bidder, and there was all the accidents. So does that happen? Do you go with the lowest bidder?
You have to take the lowest bidder by mass general.
They do.
We just had this conversation earlier tonight.
So that's my problem with it because they're not the state best.
No. And that's what you have to deal with. We try to write specs that they have to buy, but the low bid, in the famous words of most engineers, and John, you know, the low bid is not always your best bid. Just like if you hire somebody to do work in your home, the guy shows up in a pickup truck and, you know, two hammers and a saw, yeah, he built your porch cheap, but, you know, it's not always the best thing.
The cheap porch.
And I'm a preschool teacher, so lead is so dangerous for children, anyone under five years old. Just a little bit of lead exposure does damage to their brains. It is not okay. And if it's that going to be around the area, it's not okay. You were talking about children with a fence before. I was happy to hear you with the, on Faith App. And I thought if you could have the same consideration for the children with lead, I'd be thrilled.
Mr. Chairman, can we do this in a kind of a, let's go one step at a time? Let us look at what the lead content of the second tank is?
You're going to, they're going to start the first tank first, and it's probably going to be a year at least, maybe, unless you get some kind of funding, before you go to the second one.
We accept donations, though.
They would donate enough already.
No, so the first tank is, we wouldn't further verify, but initial assessment is that it is lead-free. And so that's going to be...
And you still said you were still going to do some testing?
Yes, we're still going to do some paint chip analysis, and we'll do the paint chip analysis on the second tank.
Did this occur that she's talking about during a sandblasting operation?
Yes.
Unfortunately, there's a bus stop. Mary lives there, right there. So the stand right where the, right, I can't even, Mary, maybe you can show Mary. There's a bus stop right there.
Mary Johnson, 199 Prospect Street.
Lots of kids.
I know.
So these, the kids stand actually in the water where they drive their trucks and where they're going to be coming in for, that's where the children stand, right there. They wait for the bus.
So I guess they're going to need to move.
They're going to, unfortunately, yeah.
But, you know, my kids, they're the ones role bleeding right at the end of every single day, you know, playing. So my biggest concern are my children. Of course, you say, there's people all over the world or wherever coming to do these, I don't, you know, that's a little concerning to me to let my kids play outside with people working there. My other question is, is right now they're digging up the road to redo it. Are your trucks going to have side effects on the new road on Prospect Street? Are we going to be redoing the road again down the line?
I don't think that'll happen because he's, it's not going to be, you know, it's going to be some cement trucks, which would have to come up if they're doing anything in anybody's house anyways. And the town standards are pretty strict on what the new roads are going to be like. My concern would be with the lead and the dust. It's not going to be that same operation again. But I think Ken and his engineer can clearly hear what the voice of concern is from everybody, and it's one to me and I assume all the rest of the members of the board.
What's the protocol after you do these testing samples? Are we going to be aware of what the outcome is?
I want to hear about that.
Mr. Brooks?
Go ahead.
But before we do that, can we just have your name and address for the record?
Mary Johnson, 199...
You got it? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so what I was going to ask through the chairman is if since the first tank's happening first anyways, and given whatever your second approval is, would it be out of line to request the applicant to appear at a meeting, notify butters again when the second tank is ready for demolition?
Well, yeah, we can, if you think it's, if it's two years beside, okay, so if it falls within that, we'll still have a condition that he has, they have to appear prior to.
Yeah, notify butters.
To notify butters prior to the commencement work on the second tank.
That could be helpful.
And if it, and then we can put it or wait to reapply if for the second, if we need a second two-year period.
Yeah, it can be conditioned to...
Instead of just being automatic, and then, and it's, and it would be just as simple as Ken knows, is assuming that he's going to have to put extra money or have something in his budget. You'd come, have him remediate it, and I would think that if it was going to be anything done now, even torch cutting, that they could build a containment around it. Now, it's going to be maybe a little more difficult because of the torch cutting and the exhaust, but, or they can do something. There's probably, there's going to be remediation companies. I know we use all kinds of that at work that do almost anything, they address any situation that you got, you know.
Like Ken described, this machine that strips that area has a vacuum.
HepaVac on it.
That's pulling all that material out, and that's pretty much a standard for this type of work.
When you come before the second thing, all your butters will come. You might have maybe somebody that can make us all right and them all right with the method of operation of how they're going to do that. And then it's been maybe looked at by some peer review or something like that.
Well, like an independent person tells us, this is the bond that they're reviewing.
By an independent person, say, yep, that's a good way. That's a good way to do it, and we got to...
Keep it transparent.
Keep it right out.
Like an industrial hygienist would look, that would be their kind of...
Yep. They have to be on site probably all the time that they're doing it, or a good portion of the time.
Depends all again on the lead content and the air exposure. Industrial hygienists protect the workers.
That's exactly what it was in industrial...
Right, and so they're there...
They were there for at least two weeks, two weeks straight, testing every day.
But you're going to have air monitors there, right?
Right.
Correct.
They run continuously whenever he's working. They hung air monitors around the other side.
The workers.
Yeah, the workers, they hung on the property line, so they want to...
Somebody in the back, that's worse.
Yeah, Nancy Masara, 215, Prospect Street. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. When they did all this with the back tank a couple of years ago, I couldn't walk in my backyard for weeks because I had so much stuff on my shoes. We can move on with the lead paint. You guys are going to notify us, let us know when you do anything about that. My question right now is, is this going to affect my pressure? Right now I have a pump that runs in my cellar because I'm the last on the line. Those guys have reduces. I'm the first pump. I have to have a pump.
Unfortunately...
Am I going to have to get a bigger pump?
No.
Can I eliminate the pump?
No, unfortunately, the top of the tanks will be exactly at the same height they are now.
Not to change anything.
Not going to change a thing. So there's no change in pressure.
It's not going to be worse.
It will not be worse.
Couldn't be.
Yeah. It's not going to be worse.
If, let me put it this way, if your houses were to be built today, you couldn't build your houses there because DEP has new regulations about how much water pressure you need. So your...
I'm right on the line.
But your houses could not be built today in that spot. But that, these have been up there for 40 years, so...
Yeah, because they had, when they did all that, when we put...
Yeah, you'd need a domestic booster in your cellar. Yep.
Elizabeth Rice, 127 Prospect Street. So when you drain the tank one, the quality and quantity of water will not, we won't even know you did it.
You won't know it.
And so my question too is about the pressure. So I'm at 127.
We're down hill.
And I'm, you know, burned through two pumps in the last 25 years on my third. And to the point where my grandson, every time it comes on, you know, makes a face. But I was hoping that with the new technology, possibly, there might be some improvement.
The, inasmuch as to get more pressure for people at the top of the hill, it also increases the pressure excessively of the people at the bottom of the hill. And so it's a happy median. And to rework the system, I'd have to change eight pumps. The pumps right now have just enough of capacity to pump the water up to the top of the tank and no more. And they'll reach that and the pump shut off. And so it would be a major retooling of our system to increase water pressure. Then at the same time, we create excess pressure elsewhere, so that pressure would have to be reduced, unfortunately.
Plug in holes.
It's just a replacement of the tanks, not a redo of the system.
And how much truck traffic do you assume this is going to incur on Prospect Street? Because we've had quite a bit of construction up there in the last couple of years that just see trucks, one after another, go. So I mean, is it like four trucks a day going up and down? Or is it just they come up in the beginning of the day, do their work, and then...
No idea to find truck traffic, but most of the...
Once you run through how many trucks you roughly expect, the two for the...
There'll be trucks in, okay, let's start with the demolition. There's a truck that delivers the forklift.
Right, sure.
So they deliver them. The guy shows up and he shows up, he has a pickup truck and a trailer that he keeps his torches in. Then there's trucks coming up to pick up the roll-offs with the scrap metal in it. And then when he jackhammers up the concrete, the broken-up concrete gets hauled offsite. The rebar that he takes out gets recycled. Then a truck comes up and an excavator comes up, digs the new foundation.
Right, but it's not daily up and down, up and down?
No, no, it's not like your solar farm. It's not like the solar farm.
Like Ken said, it's going to depend on the stages of the project. There'll be times when they're, when they're working on all the materials are on site, it's going to be just start of the day, the workers arriving on site.
It's not the solar farm.
Concrete.
Yep.
Couple of different stages and maybe three or four trucks for that particular board.
And we would just really appreciate if they adhere to the hours.
Yeah, well, that's whatever the board decides.
Construction contract.
How do all people feel about 7:30 to 5:30, or 6 o'clock or something like that?
Because it's no Saturday.
Get it done, get it done in less time.
Mrs. Vielen just said, you know, short days make for a longer period.
Right.
Longer days make for shorter periods. So there's a happy median there. We don't want to, you know, impair, and that's why we said, we're starting in early spring. By the time you stay with picnics or having your windows open, the heavy lifting will be done. So that's why we're trying to follow that.
And those scrap stock trucks with the dumpsters, they'll be stacking that in there tight because they're not going to want to go out with bulk and that.
I was amazed how much you can stack in that truck.
He could take 30,000 or 40,000 pounds at a time.
They're 30, and he just stacks it in there and they go...
It'll let, you know, pack in nice. So I think...
Do they have covers over them?
Yeah, they require a maximum like that, yeah.
Anything else, Mrs. Rice?
No, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, John.
Is the requirement in the contract, I know there's a question about lowest bidder, but generally on SRF funding and state funding, there's a requirement for proof of how many jobs you've done in the last five or 10 years to make yourself qualify. Is that part of this contract?
We don't know if we have SRF funding, first of all. If we do, that would be for the second tank. The first tank will not be SRF funded, that's going to be funded.
We always ask for qual.
But we look for qualifications. We do a full reference check. There's a means to disqualify a bidder.
Oh, yeah.
We'll go for it.
I'm just trying to...
Yeah, no, it's standard practices that, you know, the guy with the pickup truck and a wheelbarrow...
Doesn't come around.
That won't get the job.
This type of tank is very specialized construction, so...
The only thing I wanted to mention is sealer was mentioned to seal the existing tank. That is about a billion times worse than the lead that's on the tank. If you knew the chemicals that's in that sealer, you wouldn't even ask for it. It's incredible. Start with methyl ethyl ketone that bites into the paint, that helps the sealer stick. You don't want any part of that.
No, these are all NSF, National Safety Foundation-approved products for potable water. And they're low VOCs and...
I'm talking about why you seal the tank now.
Oh, oh.
Before you start.
Yes. If we put some kind of coating on the top?
Yeah, yeah, seal the chips.
Yeah. That's what you meant. Oh, I thought you meant...
We thought you're talking about sealing.
I think if they are sealing, they remediate them.
But it's standard practice now, you have everything with HepaVac. Even when you drill a concrete, you have to have HepaVac on the drill now. Anytime you do something like that, grime, you have to have HepaVac on the equipment now.
It's a lot of intensive worker safety. So if the worker is protected, then anybody outside the work zone is more than protected.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Byler?
Thank you. Joyce Christiansen, Byler, 199 Prospect Street, right next to the water tanks. Ours was the yard that took that hit, a lot of the hidden, I believe, shared in 1995. And I think it's clear, nobody in this room wants to see that happen again. I appreciate that tremendously. Looking at the first tank, you mentioned that the concrete slab will be bigger than it is now because the tank, the new tank will be bigger.
In diameter, at the same height.
So I'm wondering, will it go outside the existing fence?
No.
Or, oh, good, okay.
The little inner circle is the.
Yeah, just inside the shaded area.
Okay, so we'll stay within.
That little circle right there, that's the existing tank. And.
Let's see.
Right where John had.
Here, this outer circle right here.
That's the new tank.
That's the new.
Okay.
This inner circle is the existing.
They're going to go as close as.
The fences right here.
Away from us. Okay.
Essentially, the best we can locate them on the same location. Not any further uphill, not any further to the street, as close as we can get them right where they are.
Good. And then another question, in case the lowest bidder is picked, is there somebody who can be hired to monitor the whole thing as it goes? Like a watchdog?
Taylor Howard watches.
Yes.
Our consultants.
Yeah, we have, I'm up there every day.
Right.
They were sick of seeing me. They were sick of it. I said, don't you have something else to do? And no, I'm, I'm very tough on my contractors and.
Ken, how long have you been with the water department?
I've been with the water department 15 years now.
You live in town?
No, I live in, I live out of town, but I've worked in town all my life. I worked for Cullinan for 30 years, so I have more roots here than I have out, oh, my, oh, okay.
And then along the lines of the watchdog, a problem that happened before, another generation, another time, but there wasn't open disclosure. We relied on neighbors to tell us what was going on. Will you notify us if things change, if anything happens?
Yep.
On any changes in the plan, anything?
We'll work to make it as transparent as, we'll make it transparent. And after that, we can only enforce to a certain, but I would say that Mr. Wood being here, and he has an excellent reputation in the water department in the town, that he would, he hears the concerns, and we have all your concerns, all of us, okay, have the same concerns, if not more. And especially where it involves children or anything like that, so we're going to do everything we can. And prior to the beginning of the operation on the second tank, they'll come again before us and we'll review all of this, we'll go through it all A to Z, and by that time, Ken will have had maybe some testing companies come in and offer some solutions to how we might remediate the lead if it needs to be in that other tank.
Will there be another public hearing like this on the first?
We can set it so that it can be a public hearing.
On the, on the second tank? Okay. Well, on the first tank, once you get bid in, can you notify us about the timeline?
Joe, yeah, once we get it worked out.
Ken, you can look to get, figure out how you're going to get a listing off the maps of who the neighbors are, because it would be people also other than what's right here now.
Right, and whether by mail or however you want to do it, if they wanted to circulate a.
Put it right in the door.
Yeah.
Just put a flyer in the door, everybody gets one.
So, you know, once we know when we bid, you know, timeframe and everything else, yeah, we'll let you know, when it works, we'll start.
Okay.
Condition it.
My last point that I'd like to make, I would just like to thank everybody for this information. Ken, I had a chance to talk with personally today, and you do a great job maintaining that property.
We try.
It looks good, and we appreciate that.
And I assure you, once, it'll be messed up for a while, but once it's all done, you can't clean up till you've done making a mess.
It'll be better than ever.
At least equal or better.
And the thing is, you know, it's to improve the water quality, and it'll be two new tanks, which are porcelain into the steel on the inside and outside, and they won't, we won't ever have to look at this problem again.
You got to remember, you got to break a few legs to make an hour one.
Nancy Gigan, 177 Prospect Street, we live two doors down from Joyce. The incident that happened years ago did not affect my property that I'm aware of. No one notified me about it or anything. But it appears like the town has taken lessons learned, and I think the timeframe is different now, and you know more about how to mitigate things than you perhaps did in the 19, whatever.
195.
Technology has made great advances in that.
Yeah.
There are some even robotic de-letting machines that climb up and down the tank by themselves, and they vacuum up everything. And we elected not to go that route. Again, just because money, but just the overall protection, once, once it's gone.
Band-aid, something that could have, might be, already got leaks popping.
Yep, so, you know, this isn't a, it's really an optional project, these projects have to be done. It's something that's been put off for years, but it, it's time to do it. And so in the next five years, both tanks need to be replaced.
After these two, is there any others? You did the.
No.
We only have the four tanks.
Four tanks, that's enough. Some superintendents don't touch a tank in their career, and so with, this will be four. So when I leave, it'll leave somebody in pretty good hands, that they're make, virtually maintenance free. They'll have the annual inspection, some cleanings, you know, but virtually maintenance free.
Any other public?
Yes, William Rivers, 404 Prospect Street. How's this going to affect my rates? And you said something about runoff, one of the Prospect Street runoff, what Prospect Street storm drainage is there? Because every time it rains and the ground's frozen, I got a turret of rain and water coming across the street into my air.
Which number again?
204.
204?
Next to Scary, next to Phoenix Row.
The existing drainage is collected by a catch basin and right where, right in front of the tanks.
Right in front.
And, and we just looked at that pipe today. It goes towards the north or east, rather.
Drainage J Maxx?
Goes this way.
Yeah, it goes towards Booth Road there, yeah. It goes down. I'm sorry, but that's kind of a town problem.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, the town.
We're not, we're, we work well with the town, but the district is a separate political subdivision of the Commonwealth. Drainage problems, best addressed.
Will be the highway engineer.
Yeah, so, but the water, any water that comes off the site goes the other way.
Down towards where it takes the bend.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so where you're, you're almost in that flat plain up at the top, and there's not a whole lot for it to go before it goes towards Hill Street. So you're on a kind of little flat spot up there. But I know, we just opened a manhole, the catch basin today, and the runoff from the tanks goes eastbound.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, what about my rates? How's that going to go?
Can we just raise the rates?
I noticed.
And, and, you know, I guess, we try, Commissioner Striberi hard to minimize the rate increases. As you can tell, we're spending a lot of money that has to be spent, and they're trying to keep our borrowing within the revenue that we, we only get money from the ratepayers. We have no taxation from the town or anything else, so only your water bill.
The town doesn't?
No.
Oh, it's a private entity.
Private entity. It's not private, it's a public, but we fund only by your water rates. So if that, so I can only spend so much, and I only can, do you want me to charge you more money?
No, I want to spend less.
Now, the commissioners are very concerned about, you know, rate increases and the impact on everybody from seniors on up, and we try our best to keep it right at the thing, but we have a fiscal responsibility to stay out of the red, so to speak, and, and just have money for rainy days.
In non-profit, but you need the money for your maintenance and.
Capital expenditures, which are.
Tank building and all of that.
Just maintenance of the system.
Those new tanks, you're not concerned about, there's going to be a lot of bolts in there. It's going to be noisy, but down the side, I understand that. You're not concerned about a chip in the porcelain?
No.
And rusting around where the porcelain is?
It's encapsulated, they, they have special bolts with plastic on them and everything else, so it's, it's a unique system. It's, they've done 15,000 tanks as one manufacturer, so they, they don't want to come back. They definitely don't want to come back, so they, they try to do their best to do it right the first time.
What color are they?
These tanks, right now we're proposing a cobalt blue. It's, it's, some people say on a cloudy day, it looks black, but it's a real pretty cobalt blue.
I'd say, yeah, I agree.
Oh, I haven't heard of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Nick?
None.
Scott?
What's up?
Wendy?
Good.
Matt, you got all the notes?
I believe so.
Ken basically, you know, will.
I'm going to review it. Okay. Potential construction hours, 7:30 to 6 P, Monday through Friday only. I wrote water rate reduction for everyone, does that count?
People want to hear.
Matt, you can write whatever you want.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that.
All right. Be a condition for a future public meeting when the second tank construction is, has come closer.
Yeah.
And with the notification of a butters also. And in addition, there'd be a condition, notify a butters for construction start for the first tank. I circled this, maybe not a condition, but I think it's something you're doing already, replacing the old fences and the old fences on, on site, get rid of the barbed wires.
Yeah, that section of fence.
Just on the front portion.
Right on the front.
Okay. Construction vehicles not parked within the right of way. Do like some sort of automatic extension for site plan approval, but with the condition for the public hearing.
Right, with the condition that they come before the commencement of the second operation.
I just wrote a standard generic condition with paint to be handled and remedied by a licensed specialist, just standard like that.
And I would expect that you'll, prior to that, you'll have time, and you'll know when you're getting close, they're going to be coming to us and doing it, that you'll have to talk to those remediation people.
Yeah.
And see all the options that you, excuse me, have.
Depends what the level is.
Yep.
So goes with the least detail as needed for removable materials if you have to be in the right of way for any reason. Standard, our, standard conditions such as provided by all approvals and conditions of state agencies, town boards, departments, submitted as built when you're finished. And there's no lighting, so we're good there.
And it'll only be in an emergency situation where you may come and ask us because of, you have not been able to work during the week or something like that, that there may be an occasional Saturday or something like that to make up for the time.
Yeah, with the board's approval.
Only if it's in a limited amount.
Yep.
Do Saturdays, eight to noon with notification.
Only with notification.
Yes. I think Saturdays and holidays, you know, like this past holiday, was kind of, no disrespect to Colombian, Columbus friends, but a lot of people didn't work.
Yeah, half the people work, half of them don't.
So the major, the big holidays are a no-brainer.
I said, you didn't discover America, why are they celebrating?
Our indigenous friends.
Oh, is that what they?
There you go.
Sorry, motion.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to close the hearing.
We have a second.
Second.
She made the motion.
He made the motion, he seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is approved.
Is there a motion to approve with conditions?
Is there a motion to approve with conditions?
I'll make the motion, approve with conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Aye.
And you'll figure a way to notify the butters.
Yeah, if.
And keep them updated on.
I don't know if that's the way to do that. Can you round up your, can I ask you to do that, Joe?
For crossing?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I can help with the.
Yeah, just give me a list, all your nails, or stuff like that, all circulated, so if you can do that, well, you see that's connected here. No disrespect intended to anybody else, but no.
She's the friendly.
I don't know what to say. Anything else, Ms. Brooks?
No, we're fine.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All the board members.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Your wishes, I'll have a signature sheet, and I can draft the decision, and then send it around for review and attach the signature page in advance of the Thursday meeting.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You got my email, right? 177.
I sent you a letter.
A lot of them. Yeah. And Mr. Kremler.
You guys all.
Josh Kremler.
We're sending.
I think he was trying to place me for like five minutes, because I thought he was going to take me, and he just like.
No, I, I. Thank you.
I got it Friday.
Got a legal.
I'm not. I'm senior.
I got.
Still worried about.
I can't. The way we condition it, that he has to come back and install those things ahead of time.
He was the one that told us we can't. He went to town on like the environmental. Shut it down.
All right. Let's wrap this up.
I still don't think.
Let's wrap this up.
I'm going to have a.
I think it's.
We do just.
Like as fast as.
Nice, just want to.
Okay. Member discussion, associate member vacancy, we have a good October meeting schedule is October 30th. Additional content, anyone?
I do.
Matt?
I have two signature pages for our decision for the electric vehicle charging stations at the Albert Mall. It's just signatures for all, I still have to write the decision. One of them was continued upon receiving an amended landscaping plan, which I had not received yet. I won't be attaching these signature pages until the, until that's received.
And then I have picked up.
Nine today?
Yes.
And.
Yes.
When are you going to dig for over two hours? I don't know. This should be. We can, that's okay, and the other ones. Yeah, we have a lot, yeah, should be. You're giving them? Yeah. No, it's okay. I appreciate it, before it's posted for everybody, I'd rather. Yeah. So.
Yes.
Once you read it so many times.
Yeah, W.
It'll look. I did minutes for you, so you don't have to. And the one that I did, she was an English teacher, so she used different highlight markers to make different colors, that's how, yeah. So, yeah, I feel you paid.
Minutes of 9:25:18.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Do we have them? Anything else by anybody? Matt?
Sure.
Motion for adjournment?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.